Good evening. The League of Women Voters of Pocatello and Pocatello Channel 12 Community Television welcomes you to this forum featuring the candidates running for the Pocatello City Council. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization which seeks to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League neither supports nor opposes candidates for office at any level. Instead, it works to provide educational opportunities to the voting public to ensure a well-informed electorate. League is always open to new members, both men and women. There are membership forms available should you be interested. Our moderator tonight will be Margaret Gagnon, who will introduce our panel and describe the format for tonight's forum. Thank you. Please excuse this. We have ten candidates. We've never had such a packed dice, so we just realized there's no mic down here where I was going to be. So, let me get us started, and then I'll head over to the podium, and we'll do this a little more comfortably. Roger was reluctant to sit next to me. I tried to squeeze in, there wasn't a lot of room.
I figured it was over if I knocked her off.
So, apologies. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for informing yourselves about the candidates. We have quite a field. I think you'll really enjoy hearing their views on the issues before the city. The format is a two-minute introduction, we'll go down the line, and then each candidate will have a minute and a half to respond to each of the questions that come from the audience. If they care to have a rebuttal, they'll have thirty seconds, and I'd like to strongly encourage them to let it go if it's not super important to you. Otherwise, we can only get to about four, five, or six questions since there are so many. However, it's your call. We will alternate who responds to questions first so that it's a fair opportunity for everyone. For you in the audience to submit a question, just raise your hand. We have index cards coming around, and then raise it again when you need someone to collect it. The audience who are viewing from home can call in on (234) 6289 to submit their questions. Just a note, we often get several questions on the same issue, so we do combine those to make one question, and we sometimes have to rewrite the questions, especially if we can't read them well. So hopefully, we'll get the essence. And to get us started, we'll start on my far left with the candidate for... I think I've lost all sight of names. So, for candidates for seat one, we have Mr. Jim Johnston and Mr. Danny Wells, and we'll start, if we could, with Mr. Wells.
Hello, yes. My name's Danny Wells. I was born here in the Bannock Hospital way back in the day. I'm the youngest of eight children. We moved to Aberdeen. I graduated from Aberdeen High School. I served a two-year mission for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and from that point on, I have been a member of the Pocatello community. I call it my home. What did happen is during the summertime, there was an issue with the PRT, and I was able to jump into that issue and help make a change. And through that, I found out that a single voice can be heard, and you can make a change in the government. So, I started to run, and run for seat one, and that's what I'm here for, is to ask for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Johnston?
Thank you very much, Margaret, and League of Women Voters. Appreciate being able to be here in this public forum. My name is Jim Johnston, and I am currently a member of the Pocatello City Council, and I really enjoy the give and take and the activities of city government. I was born in Twin Falls, graduated from Twin Falls High School, went to the University of Idaho, where I was student body president, graduated there with an undergraduate degree, a Bachelor's of Science in Education. I then obtained a Master's Degree in Religion from Brigham Young University with an Associate Degree in Educational Administration. Came to Pocatello and completed the coursework for a doctorate in government with emphasis in state and local. I got sidetracked into real estate and did not finish that degree, but for the last yea many years, I've been selling real estate in Pocatello. I find that city government is extremely interesting. It's impossible for us to all agree on everything. It seems like about half the time, half the people are unhappy and half are happy with what you do. But I'm grateful for the opportunity to be in Pocatello and to experience the wonderful things that we have here. Great quality of life, many, many opportunities that are not available in many other communities. I'm very concerned in terms of our economy and what we're doing, and am anxious to be able to continue to do the marvelous things that are taking place right now in Pocatello city government.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Now, candidates for seat number two. We have first, Mr. Kevin Perry.
What you want me to say?
You may respond, or at least address yourself to the audience, maybe your qualifications and introduction.
Hi. Ain't got much education, but I know a lot, and I get along well with people. I'm good with helping people get together and calm and pull. That's about all I got, folks.
Thank you. Second, we have...
Lot of vote for him just because it was short.
No sense in making a big, pretty speech and stuff, a lot of words in one thought.
Next to address us as a candidate for seat number two is Mr. Wayne Skip Carter.
Hello, thank you for letting me be here. My name's Wayne Carter. Been a seventy-year resident of Pocatello, raised here. Went to Pokie High, worked at Shitty Garage while I was going to Pokie High, from Maryland to the Navy, ended up in an aircraft carrier in Vietnam in the Gulf of Tonkin for a while. Wasn't a real plan, but worked out okay. I have, I don't know, I think I have a great, you know, pretty good investment in the community, and I'm not much of a public speaker, but never done this before. But I'd like to be involved, and I think I'd like to be involved in continuing the success of the city. I think it's got some growth, and it's been pretty good lately. I think the reasons I'm kind of running is I've always been interested, but I've always lived out in the county, and now I'm in the city, and I'm on the west side, and I'd like to represent the west side. You know, I think it needs a voice, and you can always use another alternate choice as a representative. I'm really into the revitalization of the old town Pocatello, and the restoration's important. The cement ditch has always been a real problem for me. I'd like to see something happen there. And I believe the city's on the right track myself, and I've seen some great improvements over the last few years, and I'd like to see those keep going on. There's always room for another view and another idea, and I hope I could bring some fresh ideas, maybe a perspective to the job, give it a shot. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third candidate for seat two is Mr. Sierra Idaho Lorax Carter.
Well, welcome, everyone that's here. Welcome the audience out there. This is not my first time at Pocatello. I was here many years ago and was instrumental in getting the nuclear materials exposed, made illegal, and educated people back then. But that was twenty-five years ago. Some of you probably don't remember much of that, when we had it on our streets, on our schools, and basically everywhere. And there were a lot of efforts for cover-up, but the cleanup never occurred. And so, basically, I'm, this is my home base. I always stop back in Pocatello, and I'm here to clean it up, and for those who will. And I'd like briefly, just quickly, to have a show of hands of who is behind the living with uranium, the killing of our children and loved ones here from the exposure of this airborne material, when it gets airborne. Anyone? Let me ask the other question then. Who is for the great Pocatello uranium cleanup? Any show of hands here?
Yeah, we'd love to see EPA clean it up.
Yeah, well, you have EPA, and you've got a crooked agency there too, and it won't release a lot of information that I already have. But that's the way it is when you're the only expert in the region, and, you know, nobody wants to debate me and talk about it. But I'm here to help your children, help you wake up, get active, get involved, stop selling properties with uranium materials on them, stop the schools from contaminating our children by the nuclear freeze zone initiatives, and basically live a happy future, not having to keep living with uranium in the loose powdered form that gets airborne, and eventually will give you all cancer or mutations or other illnesses innumerable.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
You're welcome.
The final candidate for seat two is Mr. Steve Brown.
Thank you very much. I appreciate events like this. It's good and necessary. I have been on the council for five years now, and it has been quite the experience. The one thing that has always bothered me is the lack of participation. Here we sit, there'll be a few more voters than this, but not many, on November 3rd, and that's frustrating, because it's important to have a diverse opinion. We live in a diverse community, and so I appreciate the opportunity to have not only this, but to have other people running for the same seat, because it's important for us to discuss the things that are before us, to learn from what we've done in the past, and to make Pocatello a better place. I've always tried to live by Henry Clay's statement when he said, "Politics is not about ideological purity or moral self-righteousness. It's about governing, and if a politician cannot compromise, he cannot govern effectively." I've tried to live by that. I hope that I've kept the faith over the last five years, and if you feel like I have, I would certainly appreciate your support for another forum.
Thank you. Our first candidate for seat three, we have Ms. Barbara Orr.
Thanks for all of you for coming tonight. My name is Barbara Orr. I'm running for city council because I've lived in Pocatello for thirty-eight years, and in thirty-eight years, I've heard a big business from the outside is going to come in and save us all. I've also heard if you build it, they will come. Well, neither one of those things are true. We are in a situation where we need to start supporting our small businesses. We have a very serious problem in our planning and zoning department. It is convoluted, it is antiquated, it is stymied business from coming in here for thirty years, and it is not a political problem, it is a system problem. And it's easy, a lot of times, for council members to agree to spend taxpayers' money. That can be an easy agreement. It's a hard agreement to solve a difficult problem. This is a difficult problem. I've talked to more than a hundred business owners in the last three weeks, and the same thread runs through all of it. We have to start opening up this city to real business development, and the only way we can do it is to get a handle on our permit process. What happens to businesses when they come in here, they're presented with a subjective and arbitrary permit process, and if you're a business, you're going to run down the road because you can't count the cost. We also have businesses here that try to expand, and they can't because the demands the city makes on them are way too great. I would appreciate your vote. I would appreciate you electing me to try to address this problem. I know it has not been addressed in thirty years, and it really needs to be. It's the primary reason that we are not growing.
Thank you. Also for seat three, Mr. Nathan Millward.
Oh, I'd like to thank you, League of Women Voters, and those that have come to participate and listen to us. It's a great opportunity to come out and listen to the candidates and see where we all feel, where Pocatello is. My name, like she said, is Nathan Millward. I was born and raised here in Pocatello, never really left. Graduate of Highland High School, took a brief two-year vacation away from Pocatello while I served a mission for my church.
I gotta go.
Served in Venezuela, Tracas, Venezuela, and where I learned Spanish and was able to learn the freedoms that we have here, to be able to take them into my heart, be able to come home, be able to serve my community and those citizens here in Pocatello. I then came home and graduated from Idaho State University. There, I received a degree. When I finished my degree at ISU, I tried to look for a job that would incorporate my degree. There was nothing here available in Pocatello, so the next best option I went was to kind of follow my dad's footsteps and apply for Union Pacific Railroad, and was able and lucky enough to grab a job there in my career. There, been there since. I was hired there in '08, just finished my certificates and license through their program to become a locomotive engineer. And the reason why I'm running today for this spot is a concern on jobs here in Pocatello. The outlook sometimes looks pretty doom and gloom kind of thing, we hear it outside. I think with positive attitudes, with the right people, right people sitting on the right committees, we can get Pocatello to change. My wife and my little son, who's one-year-old, is a big supporter of me, and they're excited to see me around every time.
Thank you, Mr. Millward.
Well, thank you.
Our third candidate for seat three will not be able to arrive for another few moments, and so we will move to the fourth and final candidate, Mr. Roger Bray.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for offering this tonight. I hope that this, by the time it's played several times on the rewind, so to speak, will get a much larger audience. It should. I'm running for city council because I have a desire to serve. I have served in many capacities in this community. I have served in sporting groups, I have served with the Habitat for Humanity, I was anchor president for four years while they got up and going. I've been involved in the interfaith and helped develop the interfaith into what has become a model for other interfaiths, and there are people going out now to share with other communities the interfaith work that we do here in Pocatello as a way of helping other communities go. I have been here for twenty-five years, resettled, so to speak. I was born here, grew up on a farm out north of Fort Hall, and my family's here with me, my wife, and my two kids, and three grandchildren, and we're all here making it our home. I'm running because I've been gone two years, and several people have told me that they would like to see me back. One of the reasons they like to see me back is because they feel like the taxes are too high, they feel like our growth is stagnant, and I have to agree with them. Our taxes are higher now than they've ever been in the last nineteen years, and our growth... I have a couple charts, I'll point to them in a little bit, but those charts will demonstrate that we're stagnant in terms of our growth in Pocatello. So, I'm running because I think I can help change it. My first few years on the council, we were a robust community, and we grew at an unprecedented rate, and I think we can get back to that.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. We'll get started with our first question, and that will go to Mr. Johnston. What would you do to promote the economy in Pocatello?
I think one of the most important things is for us to be supportive of our existing businesses and encourage them to continue to grow and provide the services that are so essential. I think we have a great responsibility to work closely with Bannock Development and make sure we let the rest of the country know about our resources and our excellent workforce. I believe in cooperation between our community and Chubbuck, and with the county, and with the entire state. And it's vitally important that we work hard to make sure that people are aware of the good things that are here. The attraction of companies like Amy's Kitchen and Allstate are marvelous, but we need to work harder to keep the existing businesses happy and strong and vibrant, and that means to keep our taxes lower. And I'm very much in favor of reducing our taxes, and as a city council with the mayor, we are currently working very, very hard to try and evaluate every single line item in our budget. I'm not sure if you know what our budget looks like, but this is a copy of our budget, and it's really difficult to know everything, but if we can trim, it's going to be in the best interest of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Mr. Carter, what would you do to promote the economy in Pocatello?
Oh, I didn't know what name you said.
Carter. I've got Carter next.
Carter. Okay, I was wondering what your name was being said.
You hit on a lot of the right answers there, but I believe curb appeals are a good one too. You know, when cleaning up the city, it looked better than it has for a long time. I think we need to still work on that, and, you know, through enforcing the ordinances we have, I'd like to see a baseball park, you know, just... I don't know, I'm not very good at this stuff.
Thank you.
That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I'm... Just call me. Mr. Lorax.
Mr. Lorax.
Or Idaho, so we don't get confused here. Basically, I came here with a package for compensation for people with cancer, people who die of cancer, billions of dollars. You can read my testimonies on federal hearings, looking at cleanup for this community like I worked on in other places in Idaho and other places in the world, getting our just due. I'm sorry, many of yous had more than one generation of living in this community since nineteen fifties, being contaminated, especially when Bannock Pavings spread it all around the community. But, you know, jobs. I work in all kinds of areas. I am a scientist, I'm an educator in all areas, scientist in all areas, I'm an entertainer, I'm a reporter. Almost nothing I don't do if I have to. So, what can I bring? I guess you're lucky in some ways, if you want to keep me here, to make sure the cleanup is done and done correctly, properly, and safely, and so we can join the other places in the world, and even in Idaho, being properly cleaned up rather than the cover-up. Our streets are still made with uranium, their alleyways still have the uranium in them, the schools still have it nearby or on them. You know, when is it going to stop? When is the insanity going to stop? The cancer clusters keep going, and the cancer keeps coming, all the rare types. You've got to look at our pathways to cancer. I know the medical, I know a lot of it. It's time you start learning more, especially if you're going to be an informed voter and want to have a happy community in this beautiful valley.
Thank you, Mr. Lorax. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Usually candidates run not for what's going right, but what they perceive is going wrong. And we have, here in Pocatello, been a quiet leader in the state of Idaho. Most people don't know that the median salary in Pocatello is greater than that of Idaho Falls. Most people don't know that we have been ranked by the U.S. Department of Labor among the top ten cities in the nation in recovering from the recession. It's not by accident. It's not just because it's happening. It's quiet leadership with this council, with this mayor, and with this city staff that have made that occur. We're all in the same boat, we're rowing in the same direction, and we need to keep doing what we've been doing to make sure we keep the progress that we've got.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Orr?
Right now, we are supporting nine entertainment venues, twenty-seven parks, and miles and miles of greenways. At a time when all of our eighteen thousand five hundred children are confined, the times have changed. We have to look at the change in times. We can't continue building stuff that the city can't really afford. We have to really look at what we have been doing to our small businesses here, and what we have been doing to businesses in general in terms of this planning and zoning situation. We have... I talked to a business last week. He was trying to expand his shop. He has a big lot by the side of it. The requirements on him were so great that he went to Chubbuck and bought another building for the price that it would have cost him to expand this. It was not cost feasible. One of the problems our developers and our contractors have here are things are not cost feasible. It costs twenty thousand dollars more to build a house in Pocatello than it does in Idaho Falls because of fees that are charged to our contractors. I talked to a young woman, it priced her right out of the market. She and her husband were young professionals, they're not going to build a house in Pocatello because of it. These are the kinds of things that are stifling our economy, and we can't gloss over it anymore. And the way that I would make this accro...
Thank you, Ms. Orr. Mr. Millward?
Well, the question should be where we come from. The reason why I said is in eighteen thirty-four, when this location was chosen for Fort Hall, it was a trade post for most of Idaho down to Utah, Wyoming, Montana. It was a place for safety and security as well. And then the railroad came in, eighteen ninety-two, I believe, when Pocatello was formed into a city with population three thousand. The reason why I bring this up is it was the first hub in the state with a railroad station and terminal. The reason why Union Pacific chose us is because of the ideal location we are in. In nineteen ninety-four, we were named the last industrial city of Idaho. With that, we need to take that with full reign and be able to promote that, that we are an industrial city, that we are hard workers here. I think Pocatello's been undervalued for many years. Our average wage is nineteen dollars and forty-some cents, a lot higher than Idaho Falls, but you've got to take into account that that didn't count the INL wages as well. We do make a little bit more money here, but we need to promote that as well, that we are hard workers. We have an ideal location for transportation to be able to put our products on the market. We are facing a global economy, and so I think that's how we need to promote Pocatello.
Great, thank you, Mr. Millward. Mr. Bray?
The way I would begin to promote our economy would be to make our taxes consistent. The hardest thing for any business to deal with is erratic taxes. When taxes go up and down, up and down, you don't know what to anticipate, and it can hurt businesses because they get hit by a sudden increase. Right now, our taxes are at the highest level they've been in nineteen years. I have it charted over there on the first chart on the left. That chart will show you that when I was in office, five of the lowest, in fact, the five lowest years for taxes in Pocatello were during my two terms. The other thing we have to do is control the budget, because that's the only way you control taxes. And right now, there are thirteen more employees working for the city than there were when I left the city just two years ago. The other thing we need to do is we've got to make our economic development team competitive again. That's a second chart over there. You will see that in two thousand eleven, our tax values collectively in the city peaked, and we've declined, and we have just... I don't know if you can call it modest growth. If you were in the hospital and you saw that, you might be alarmed when a flat line's like that. And it's time to get things changed that way. So, we need to be aggressive in promoting Pocatello for all of the assets it has, and there are many of those, and we'll get to those on the next question.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Mr. Wells?
Can I rebut?
No, I'm sorry. We'll have a chance in a moment. Mr. Wells?
To promote the prosperity of Pocatello, one of the big things that I believe is small businesses are the lifeblood of Pocatello. We've got a lot of good small businesses, and sometimes they can't survive. And just like little children, we've got to teach them how to walk, we've got to help them. So, that's what I would encourage, is most definitely looking at our small businesses and helping them along the way, creating a liaison between the small business and city council so that they can bring their ideas to us. And then, as a city council, we need to be able to act rapidly and to help people receive a speedy response, because having to express a view and then letting it sit for six months and let the problem get worse... problem get worse, that doesn't solve a problem. So I'm looking for proactive, long-term problem-solving that will help involving our small businesses to encourage promoting the prosperity of Pocatello.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. What we will do now is go down the line. If you would like an opportunity for a 30-second rebuttal, please take that, and we'll do that same format. So please know that you'll have that opportunity. And then I see Ms. Frazier has joined us. You will have a chance, if you care to, to comment on promoting Pocatello's economy in a 30-second rebuttal. Shall we start with Mr. Johnston, and you rebuttal?
The very nicest thing is everyone here wants to see things grow and progress. And I think that is probably one of the most important things when we can work together. Great diversity in this panel, but we all have the same objective, it appears, to have Pocatello grow in a modest way and build on what we have.
Thank you. Do you care to rebut?
I believe what he says is true. I believe we need smart growth, and what we're looking at is...we've been doing pretty good, and I'd like to see us keep continuing that. I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, in terms of our economy or jobs or materials, look how much we waste trying to cover things up in our streets. That's a tremendous budget we have here. I first came here, I tried to get those records. And conveniently, they were all destroyed because we wanted compensation for all that money spent by our city government in terms of those kinds of expenditures in the past and present. It's going on constantly. Now, not against long-term cleanup, but the short term has got to happen too quickly and soon because of what it's doing to our population.
Thank you. Any rebuttal, Mr. Brown?
Just very quickly. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you.
Just because you repeat a lie often enough doesn't make it the truth.
Lies?
And Mr. Brown, please, address your remarks to the audience.
Well, I can't let this pass anymore. I met with the DEQ and received multiple reports from them. And the things that Mr. Lawrence says is self-serving and inaccurate.
Thank you. Ms. Orr?
With our businesses, you know, when we go out to attract business from outside and we have business here, if we do not get a handle on our planning and zoning, it makes no difference. That's why we haven't grown in the last 30 years. I will give you an example. There are two doctors that own some land up on the hill above Center Street. It took them two years to get the planning and zoning here, to draw five lines on a plot plan so they could sell that property and develop it.
Thank you. Any more rebuttals? Mr. Bray?
You want to go, don't you? Yeah, you want to have a chance.
Did you care to address the question of...
I'm going to let her have her 30 seconds first.
Thank you. Sorry to be late. I was working. I think one of the ways to help the economy grow is not only the small businesses, to help them expand and grow, but to get rid of the regulation and get rid of the red tape and things that stop these companies and these businesses from growing.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
First thing I would say is that the problem isn't the rules, it's the way the rules are ambiguously applied. We've been through that with our childcare facility we just developed. It wasn't that we couldn't deal with the rules, we just couldn't figure them all out. And if it was streamlined where you could understand them, it'd make it a lot easier. Second thing I would point out is that we are a town that lived on big business. Versailles, Saraguard, the Union Pacific, Semplot, their business facility. I could go down a list, but there are lots of companies that have left.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Mr. Wells? Any rebuttal? No. We will start then with Mr. Carter. The question is this: How do you plan to work with the county on problems that affect both entities?
I have no idea. I really haven't...really don't have any idea what to do with some of this stuff. I'm going to learn like everybody else, I hope. So I'm not really sure, other than try to communicate. Like, now we have, you know, the city of Pocatello and Chubbick are working together a lot, so I think that the county can do the same thing.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
Sustainability. I've been working with the county since I came here. I'm not banned from the county, just to go on record. But I do not like being said I'm lying for an agency that does lie. And in fact, that's one of the reasons they don't come here and debate or argue or even meet with me. In fact, my testimony has already been done 25 years ago in an exposure of the material. That's why it's illegal. Did they provide you with that document which I requested from them?
Mr. Lawrence, please address the audience.
Okay, anyway, you can request this information, too. You can find about the illegality, the decisions were made back in 1990. Okay? This stuff should have been cleaned up, it should have been addressed to you, it should have been protected, it should have been done. But it wasn't. It entered into another phase of cover-up, denial, do not tell, and cover-up. And that's what we've been living with. That's what your children and loved ones and pets and everything's been dying from. This stuff has markers on it. You can trace it. And there's people in INL and other agencies that all know very well what this material is and how deadly it is in airborne form. There is no argument. It's that simple. It's grade school stuff. That's what makes a bomb work. That's what solar wind is. And that's how you get cancer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
If it was that bad, you'd wear your mask every day, not just when it's the TV's on.
Every day, I do.
Okay. The relationship with the city of Pocatello and the city of Chubbick and Bannock County is in a pretty good spot right now. Probably a bit better than it has been in decades past. And there's a free flow of communication back and forth, as evidenced by the Wellness Center, which is a phenomenal complex and an asset to our community. And we just need to do our due diligence to make sure that those lines of communication stay open.
Thank you. Ms. Orr?
In working with the county and the city, I would do the same thing. And to answer Mr. Lawrence, and the same thing is to get proper information, to get truthful information. That's what helps the most. On a scale of 100 to 0, if you put the radiation...a serious radiation is 100, fatal instantly. Radiation that'll make you sick and terrible suffering, 75. Radiation that might give you cancer, you know, in 20 or 30 years is a 50. The background radiation here is .31. If you're standing on top of the slag pile, it's eight times .031. If you're in the city, it's 0.93. The cancer rates for Idaho are 426. Cancer rates for Utah are 391. Cancer rates on anything back east are way greater, way higher, anything east of the Mississippi. The cancer rates in Louisiana are the highest, over 600, party on. So what Mr. Lawrence is concerned about is the reality of it is a lot different. That's the way I would help the county and the city, is get them accurate information to make good decisions. I am capable of defining things in a simple way. I'd like your vote, and I'd like the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Millward?
One of the greatest examples of working together is the Bannock County Development Court, where there's several people on that board that have a lot of influence here in Pocatello. I believe Pocatello and Bannock County need to get on the same page as a vision. I think we need to sit down and make a plan on where we want to see our area go. If you look at the charts compared to Idaho Falls, because a lot of people compare Pocatello to Idaho Falls, Idaho Falls is growing. In the last three years is what we grew in 10 years. That's how much more they are growing. They're spending their money within their own city limits as well. They're spending 2.3-some percent more money in their own economy than we are in ours. They took in $253 million in sales tax compared to our 117. We need to sit together and make that dream happen or make a plan, and then start following it.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
I think one of the best ways to work together with the county and the city is not only collaborate with each other, but to be honest with each other, to have your information, your facts with each other, and not be afraid to talk with each other. Sit and just talk with each other about each subject and your concerns and take in input from other people. I think there's a lot to be said for that also.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
I think there's pretty good communication between the city and county, but I don't know that there's good communication between the city and the county and the voters. For example, I don't believe that we all understand what was exactly committed to Amy's Kitchen coming in. We know that there were lots of tax dollars committed to it, but we don't know exactly what was committed in terms of incentives they needed to perform against to qualify. We don't...it's just a milieu of things. In fact, it was so bad that the, I believe it was the Attorney General had to come in and tell them some of it was illegal in order for them to straighten it out. So I really think there's some communication that needs to occur between the people and the voters, and particularly between legal minds and the minds that want to do things their way. That way, the Attorney General wouldn't intervene. The other thing I think can happen between the city and the county, we have to have a planning together. I don't think that...it's probably been eight years or more since the city, at least to my knowledge, has done a comprehensive plan. I don't know about the county, but I know that there's not been a plan between the two forever. And so a comprehensive plan where they both get engaged, I think, would really help. And it helps you to target business and development and even taxes. There can be a plan that you develop that helps the citizens and it helps business to know how to come in and engage this community.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, the relationship between the county and the city, we need to encourage it, we need to embrace it. Because working together, we can have a mutually beneficial society, and both of us are going to grow. Also, one of the things that we need to do is we need to...what we've been doing with ISU, right here, Go ISU, is we need to encourage and work with ISU more and the city, and together, we're going to grow and be a better place.
Thank you. Mr. Johnston?
The relationship between Bannock County and the city of Pocatello is a significant relationship. We need to communicate with each other. We need to communicate better with all entities of government. Today, I had the opportunity to go with the mayor to Idaho State University, where there was ribbon-cutting on a cooperative effort to improve the safety on Martin Luther King Drive. I think that's wonderful. We have great opportunities to work with the city and state legislature. It's nonpartisan. It's really important that we work together in a nonpartisan way. Mark Nye and I spent most of a day looking at 15 sites here with a man from Boise, trying to find a location for a new veteran cemetery for eastern Idaho. I was thrilled to be with Mark. He's an insightful person, and we accomplished a few things, I think. Very important for us to do this cooperation. I had conversations with the county commissioners today relative to this same cemetery. And so we just have to talk and communicate, and it'll work a lot better than if we don't talk.
Thank you. Before we get to the opportunity for that 30-second rebuttal, I'd like to point out we are almost to halfway point, and we've had two questions. So does anyone care to make a rebuttal? Okay, moving to question three.
Message received.
Are there any restrictions the city has that are too burdensome? And if so, what would you do to alleviate the burden? And we'll start with Mr. Lawrence.
Say that one more time.
Yes. Are there any restrictions that the city has that are too burdensome? And if so, what would you do to alleviate the burden?
Well, preventing Geiger counters in anybody's hands. I mean, Brian Blad, it made its own...even the Hazmet Director cannot use Geiger counters out here in the community to verify any of this information, which is easy to do, but they don't cost very much. But, you know, there's a fear of anybody going hearing the tick, 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 or actually...okay? And to clarify some information for those of you who aren't educators, okay, there's a difference between the word radiation and radioactivity. It's not a radiation issue. That's light, okay? It's a form of electromagnetic radiation. This is particles. These are the things that make atomic bombs and atoms and smash them and all that kind of stuff. This is radioactivity is our problem here. Airborne materials that has zillions and zillions of these radioactivity particles, radioactive particles, and I'm not getting your lungs, getting your body. It's not a radiation. For every gamma ray that goes out, there's two particles usually that go the other way at tremendous speeds and energies. And they're particles. They're like cannonballs to yourselves. So know that difference, please, because that difference is critical to understanding your future, knowing that subtle difference.
Mr. Brown?
I think one of the things that a council has to be very careful of are the fees that we impose and the taxes that we impose on the citizens of Pocatello. It is not something that we have taken lightly. I don't think any council does. And I think one of the things I'm very proud of with this council is we've started a very in-depth review process of every department in the city, where they come to us and we break that department apart, look at each activity and the cost of that activity, and in that cost, whether there is...what the percentage of tax dollars spent, what the amount of fees that are used to build that budget, and find out where that money goes, how it's effectively used, and the best way to ensure that it's done properly. And I'm excited to see this next budget process and how we're going to be able to approach it and, I think, see a little bit different process in building our budget this next year.
Thank you. Ms. Orr?
And one of the areas that we really have to look at are the fees that we charge that are actually extortion. And I'll give you an example of that. When a person who owns a business changes a sign for any reason in the city, even if they're just sharpening up their sign, it costs them $70. If I, as an individual, took a couple of big guys out and said, "I'm going to charge you $70 to change that sign," the police would come and get me. So I don't want to see the city do things that, in that area, a fee...when you get a fee, you get a benefit from a fee. If you go to the zoo, you get a benefit. If you go to the pool, you get a benefit. But we charge our contractors more than $20,000 just to build a house. We charge our businesses to put up signs. We have to stop any fee that does not give the individual a benefit. Another area that we charge terrible fees, contractors are licensed by the state of Idaho, but they've got to pay another fee to the city just to do business in the city. $125 a year they have to pay. We have all kinds of fees that are...they really border on extortion, and they need to stop. If the fee does not give a benefit to the person that is paying it, it is not a fee. It is not a fee. And it's got...those have got to stop. And so that's an area that is way too restrictive on our businesses.
Thank you. Mr. Millward?
Some of the burdens, I believe, that Pocatello has in place, or restrictions has in place, is, well, one thing, as we notice, we're watching our property taxes go up. It's a burden to our small business owners. Every time that goes up, they pay the full price as a homeowner. I get the homeowner's exemption. And so that really affects our small businesses. As well as the permit process here in Pocatello is extremely difficult to get a hold of. As we've heard, the charges of our permits are swirled sometimes, the things that they have to be able to cover. It costs us 5% to 6% higher to build here in Pocatello than it does in Idaho Falls. And so that cost has to be thrown back to either the renter or the homeowner or the business owner.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
I think one of the places you can find out what the restrictions are is if we lined all of you up and asked, "What do you think a restriction is? How are you restricted?" You could probably each have an answer to that. We had a lady that we talked to just this past week, and one of the things that really is hard for her to do, she's an older lady, but she's not able...she doesn't use enough garbage to actually put it out every week. She just has a little bit that...she says, "Why can't I put my garbage out like every week or every other week and not pay as much as everyone else does with a lot of garbage?" Now, I think it might be simple for some of us, but it is kind of a hardship for her. But I think, listening to the people in Pocatello, that we can actually find a lot of restrictions that are hard for them.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence? Thank you. Mr. Bray?
There are restrictions that are unique to Pocatello. And one of the things we probably could do is help people to understand why some of them are in place. We are a unique city compared to Idaho Falls. If it rains here, it ends up in the valley. Idaho Falls, it doesn't run off like it does here. So there's some slope concerns that you got to have. If you don't, the people down the hill from you will have concerns, okay? So there are some restrictions you just have to have. I believe there are other restrictions that we have that aren't so necessary. I think there are things in terms of signs and some things like that that could probably be negotiated, but I've found that people will negotiate very well. A few years ago, our building department and a person trying to work through something were at odds with each other. So I went out and I negotiated, and you know what? Nothing had to change. They just had to get on the same page. And when that got on the same page, the business took off and it was able to go. So if I were to change one thing, I would get the council members engaged again in having conversations with the citizens and doing a lot of the negotiation with the citizens and not leaving it up to just the people who are, quote, "the official employees of the church," of the, I'm starting to say church, of the city. That's my other role. I did, I've done, by the way, 40-some years on my mission.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Mr. Wells?
Yeah, the restrictions that are in place in the city of Pocatello, just right now, as the city council is working on this, I'd like to use Roger Bray because his statement was what I was going to say, is the communication between the council and the city, or the city and the council, the citizens, is we need to be able to respond faster. And just seeing, recognizing there is a problem and then not addressing the problem and solving the problem doesn't help anyone. So in itself, that's what I would encourage, is forward-looking because once we find the restrictions and we're identifying them, solve that problem as quickly as possible and not putting it off.
Thank you. Mr. Johnston?
Burdensome challenges, we have to strap on the parachute. That requires preparation, but jumping from the plane takes tenacity. If we've got some problems, we need to be aware of them and then do something about it. I think we're doing something. Comprehensive plan, 2015, we have one that we're working with, and I'm really grateful that we have something to work with. We had not done this for 11 years, but this year it happened. So we're trying to address some of these challenges. I'm really excited that we do more. Let me give you a statistic or two. Everybody on that end is doing statistics. Do you have any ideas how many police calls are made in a year? My statistics here are two years old, but 28,512 calls by our police department. How many major crimes in Pocatello? 3,610. Traffic accidents? 1,121. Fire alarm runs? 5,645. How many false alarms? 327. Boy, I've got some interesting things here, but 15 seconds won't let me say them. But we have challenges and I think the city council is awake and alert and is looking to solve these problems.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Well, that's the comprehensive plan. I'd like to, I've never ever seen it, and I think it's great, but I think the public needs to see it and needs to be put out there. I tried to look online. I had a heck of a time, but I did find all this stuff, but it was hard to find. But I think there needs to be a better way to get the public to see this.
Thank you. Any rebuttals? Then we'll start, Mr. Brown, with, oh, were there? No.
Well, I just wanted to reflect on, yes, I participated in those plans and I am concerned about development in our community and especially the development corporations that we have here because people seem to forget, we don't have any water. I mean, we can talk growth all we want. It's a unique environment. We don't have any water. There are things that are limiting. Sustainability is what brings equality to a community, not just overgrowth until you run out of resources.
Thank you. So, good segue. Mr. Brown, we'll start with you. What is your knowledge of any nitrates and sewage from septic tanks leaching into Pocatello's drinking water and how might it be remedied?
We have clean water in this city. We are lucky enough to have an amazing aquifer, which we mine just over 50% of that available water a year, which we need to, and have been focusing the last little while with a water bond, on acquiring additional water rights and making sure that we're taking care of that. As far as the septic tanks, that has been an ongoing issue as far as future safety. Right now, our water is clean and we would really like to put all of those septic systems on our sewer system. That costs a lot of money. Costs a lot of money. And so do we want to pay more taxes to get that done? That's a community decision. And so we have a very diligent staff moving forward, always looking at that, trying to find solutions, and I commend them for their effort and their constant vigilance in looking at that.
Thank you. Ms. Orr?
One of the things that you always have with water and environmental issues, you know, once you kind of take something apart, like our railroad, or the railroad, when they came in, they're the ones that moved the river in the first place. You know, once you take something apart that's natural, it's really hard to put it back together. And sometimes there isn't enough money to put it back together. And with our water, it's really important that we look at things like recycling our gray water. That's something that this city has done where we've got to make sure that the drinking water is really clean. But if we're going to support all these green areas, because grass is not native to our area, and you have to remember that, that's not native here. It takes a lot of water for all of the grass and all of the parks and that kind of thing. We need to look at using our gray water, like a lot of cities have done, our storm water and our gray water from sources to water for those areas.
Thank you. Mr. Millward?
I know there's some issues up on Johnny Creek area where there's septic leaking into the water system. We sit on one of the largest aquifers in the world. We've got to be very careful in what we do. We have our water collection, our infrastructure goes right to the Portnife River. So as citizens, I think we need to play a role in that as well as what we dump down our septic or down our streetways is what's going to end up in our aquifer, I believe. So we got to be very careful. To Steve Brown, he says our water's good with a high quality. I don't know if he's tasted it.
I've drunk it my entire life here, out of the tap.
I ended up having to put an RO system in my house, but no, just playing with them. So no, we all have to play a role in that as well, as citizens, to keep our water quality up, so.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
Yes, this is going to be a harder question for me since I'm not up on everything with the aquifer and the septic tanks and that kind of thing. But I will also kind of say what Nathan has said. I believe that us as citizens need to take a big part in taking care of our own septic tanks and taking care of how we use our water, what we use it for. You would never know that when it rains once in a while and all the flooding we get, that we don't have enough water. But I do know that we just need to play a better role as citizens ourselves.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
This question reminded me of one of the ways the city could work with the county just a little better. The city should ask the county to have larger lots so that there would be greater area for the diffusion of these nitrates from septic tanks that are in the rural areas. I think we could work on that. There are many components to this. One of the things we did while I was on the council, we restricted access around Mink Creek and some areas because the cattle were providing some of the nitrates that would get into the water just because they waited in the Mink Creek and that water was polluted by them. So there are many things that we can do to fight nitrates. A lot of it to protect the city has to be upstream of us. What we do here will protect people downstream of us, and I think we need to do both. It costs us downstream as well because when the water leaves our treatment center, it's got to meet EPA quality standards, DEQ quality standards. So we need to be taking better care of our water upstream, which the city needs to provide greater influence on because it's outside the city limits. We need to be taking better care of our water inside the city by what we do, by fertilizing yards and what we put into drains and things like that so that when it leaves the city, it's got a better quality and we don't have to enhance it so much at our treatment plant.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
The water problem with the nitrates in the sewer, this is a thing that's going to be a long-term problem that we always have to keep focusing on. We've always got to keep it on the front burner and we've always got to be paying attention to it. Because if we allow it to just settle and put it in the back and not worry about it for a couple of years, we're going to have to pay for it in the future. We just have to take this water issue. We have to keep it in the front. We have to keep reminding ourselves, reminding the citizens, and keep our clean water because we survive on that water. This is Idaho. We've got farmers right here that need that water. We need that water. We have to focus on water and keep it relevant constantly.
Thank you. Mr. Johnston?
Oh, grateful for this question. Do you realize that we have 17 wells in production that are capable of supplying for Pocatello 45 million gallons of water per day? So we have the water, but we also have the nitrates down there. And so we've just spent a whole bunch of money to clean up the nitrates, and that is a burden to our taxpayers to have to do that. We have 4.7 billion gallons of water that are consumed annually here in Pocatello. And our daily average sewer flow is 7 million gallons. So we are producing some nitrates, but we've got to clean that up before it leaves our community. We're paying for that.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I think we all have a lot of good ideas here and there. I think they all need to be all incorporated. Recycling, water conservation, zero scapey, all of them. Need to take a little bit from each one and always look towards the best.
Mr. Lorax?
Well, I am part of the Pocatello Municipal Watershed Group and I work with other watershed groups, and Jim Johnston did not want to put water first in the plan. We fought for that issue, for those who might remember in this community. Water is very important. Sure, we pump a lot of water up, but we have an invisible lake below us and it's shrinking every year until the point is even the front page of the journal, "Radioactivity in our drinking water" because it's getting more and more toxic as that lake shrinks, just like American Falls did when it dried up until that water is so toxic, it's dangerous. And by the way, Steve, it's invisible and tasteless and odorless, so yes, probably can't taste.
Thank you. Any rebuttals?
Yes, just, I just want to share a couple. This is not a new idea with this, with our city staff. This is ongoing discussions such as regional processing centers, treatment centers, so that maybe we capture some of that gray water and use it on the golf courses or maybe on the wellness center grass. That's one of the ideas. Maybe that $7 million, we capture some of it and pump it back to the south end of the city and reflow the Portnife River. I mean, there's lots of ideas.
And we've talked about those, but it's costly.
And so any other rebuttals from the panel? Yes, sir. Or, Mr. Johnston?
Well, I just have one other thing that's a sort of rebuttal. You wonder about those storage tanks on the mountains for taking care of the benches? We have 15 water storage facilities that have the capacity to store 23,120,000 gallons. So we do have water and we've got to protect it, and water is vital.
Mr. Lorax?
Right after air. That's what I was fighting for with air.
And I'm worried about the air. Very worried about the air.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, yes, I did because we look at the Portnife River and that does not contribute to our aquifer here, basically, zilch. Our aquifer comes from Mink Creek drainage and some from the other drainages in the area, but 95% comes from Mink Creek. I work with Beaver Restoration. That is, comes from snow melt. When it rains and it rushes down through, yeah, the farmers are very happy that it fills up their reservoir, but not, it doesn't go into our aquifer. It's just gone. So we need to retain some of our water.
Thank you. And we'll start again with Ms. Orr. Your question is, what one specific thing could you do to improve the budget?
Well, one of the things that is very important, and I'm glad to see the council is beginning to go through the budget and look at cost per use because you have to, you have to be closer to a budget in order to really find what's important to you. And I'll give you an example of this. We have a wonderful animal control here that has a million-dollar budget. If you adopted out 1,000 animals a year, which is not really a good idea in a community this size, that's $1,000 an animal. And we really have to look at what we're doing with our various budgets and why they're so high, what we might be able to do. Costs us a half a million dollars a year to maintain the cemetery. I'm not excited about another cemetery coming in at that price, but, and those are people that don't give us any trouble, you know? So we do have to really consider.
If they do, we're in trouble.
That's right. Well, we just need to look at things, each item, and see where we're spending our money and prioritize things is really important in the budget.
Thank you.
That goes back to the original question. We need to come up with a strategic plan here in Pocatello and then stick with it. Next year, when we see the tax exemption go up for homeowners, we're going to have an issue with our property tax value. And I imagine the city council is well aware of that. We're going to have to start looking for other funds. One way we're going to be able to maybe fix is with spending within our city. Like I was saying earlier, $253 million is spent in Idaho Falls compared to our 117. We are missing out on those sales tax that come back as revenues in our taxes. So there's a big issue here in Pocatello with spending our own money with our small businesses, and so that's where we need to start correcting it.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
I like the fact that the council now is looking over the budget, but I think my area there that I would like to see change is the people on fixed incomes, the older people also on fixed incomes. We need to be looking at ways to lower the money that we use if we can and to help these people out so they're not paying such high taxes or such high fees or just in their everyday living and the things that we use in Pocatello. The people on the fixed incomes, I think, needs to be solved.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
It's a hard thing to talk about, but one of the things that we need to do is find a strategic plan by which there can be a reduction in the number of employees here. Now, I'm not saying you go fire somebody, but what I think we need to do is use attrition and incentive to get our employees' numbers down. There's about 20 or 30 people that leave the city every year. I don't know why there's been 13 people added since I left because I don't remember hearing people talk about how they improved new people to be on the staff, so somewhere the numbers have got manipulated. So I tell you one place, we have a new public information officer. This mayor and the city can't speak for themselves, so they've got somebody else between you and them now. I'd get rid of that and then let them have to talk to you directly. The other thing, I think there can be a controlled attrition, and that controlled attrition can take out a lot of money. The biggest issue is the city has never dealt with the $2.4 million that were lost to the building contractors in their suit. You have to go back and figure out where you've been spending your money and why before you can ever start taking it apart, and that should have been done two years ago, not now. I was leaving office when that $2.4 million hit came. I think we just relied on savings and what was residing in some accounts to take care of that and we shouldn't have.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Yes, the budget, trimming the fat, it's a very unpopular idea, and as a city council member, this is something that we have to deal with quickly and immediately, just as soon as we can. Because trimming the fat is one place that we're going to be able to find or invent new money that can be used in our budget right now. And it's very unpopular because, yes, you're going to be laying off someone or cutting some need or something, and those are things that must be done. And as a city council member, I look forward And those are things that must be done. And as a city council member, I look forward to the opportunity to make those hard decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Johnston?
Well, success really favors the prepared. And I think our existing city council is working very hard to make sure we're making those tough decisions because we're going through every single line item in the budget. We want this community to be successful. And lasting success is a marathon. It's not a sprint. And so, we have to look at this on the long-term basis, and we've got to deal with everything. Right at the present time, we are looking at every single job. No department has the authority to hire anyone without it going through the mayor and the city council. And we are reviewing every single position. We're looking at attrition. We're looking at retirements. We're looking at what the city needs and what it doesn't need. So, I think we're going in the right direction. We're in this for the long haul. The marathon is happening, and we're doing the right things with the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Well, by Pocatello, support Pocatello, support small businesses, try to bring in more businesses, development, the development corporation. Stay within the budget. Don't spend any more than you can bring in.
Thank you. Mr. Lox?
Well, 95, what, 65% in the top 10 in businesses in the community are employers, the university and city, things like that. I mean, they're way up there. Basically, 35% of us in smaller businesses and things like that have to support all that. And do the top ones produce anything? Make anything? And make a product? I mean, for the most part, no. They use, they're basically dependent on taxes, university especially, the city especially, and grants, you know, to function. That's all we do, it seems, this community. We're a welfare town. Well, you know, we stopped actually making a lot of things, except getting a degree in phone calling, things like that. But we've got some serious problems in here. And I don't work with the small businesses with the Pocatello Entrepreneurial Business Association, and things like that, trying to work with small businesses. So, I am concerned of who and how and what people do here with our money and big business and how we attract it or not attract it. And I ended up with boom bus cycles in Pocatello.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
As a community, we need to decide what we really, really want and what we really, really need. And the council has been going through that process, but it's easy to let the council deal with it and stay home and do your thing. And your involvement is essential. Last city council meeting, we had two people sitting here.
One?
Yes, you were. Thank you for bringing the entertainment. But it's a difficult process. It's a difficult process. And it's not one that we take lightly. There are about 35 jobs annually that either someone retires or they go find another job, so those positions open up. And Jim talked about how we review each one of those. It doesn't take very long to say, okay, we're not going to replace five of those 35. In a couple of years, you're talking about some significant, significant dollars. And so, as we review that, we want to make sure, and this is where the council is going to play a really strong role here over the next couple of years, is making sure that that process of reviewing those jobs, the salaries that go with those jobs, the benefits that go with those jobs, is a transparent process. So, everybody can look at it and understand what that means. And that's just a very thin look at that, but it's a difficult...
Any additional comments? Ms. Orr?
I have to address Mr. Bray's idea that the contractors were paid $2.4 million. I have a copy of the court order. The court order is only a cease and desist order for a lot of these fees. That $2.4 million was never paid to the contractors, and I want to make that very clear to the city. And I want to find out where that $2.4 million, if the council thinks was paid to the contractors.
Thank you. Mr. Millward, any, Mr. Bray?
I'd like to rebut that. I didn't say that we paid them $2.4 million. We lost $2.4 million of annual income. Cease and desist meant stop collecting.
Right.
And we stopped collecting, and it was in the budget.
Then it's understandable.
So, that $2.4 million had to come out. And I don't believe it was done wisely because I don't think we ever stopped as a city and said, how do we absorb this great loss?
Any additional comments? And, yes, Mr. Johnston?
You know, we are a city of education. Our largest employer is Idaho State University. The second-largest employer is the school district. And so, I would like to think that we are a very pro-education community and not a welfare community.
Thank you. Any final comments? Mr. Lox?
Well, I just want, because both Steve and Jim were appointed originally to the city council, you know, and once you get your feet in the door, then, you know, I want you to get your feet in the door. It's easy to keep your seat. You're moving an incumbent. But I'd like to see, you know, more diversity, more variety in our community, and not always decide to vote on basically who's in our church, you know?
Thank you. Any final comments? Mr. Brown?
The contractor suit's a very difficult and expansive thing to talk about. But the reason we have that problem is because the mayor and council in 2006 implemented a budget process that created the problem that we had to deal with two years ago.
Thank you. We'll begin this question with Mr. Millward. How could the city support those community members who want to grow the Greenway?
Well, that's a difficult question as well. The Greenway, I'd like to see it finished. It's going to take a lot of funding and a lot of donations from the city council, from the citizens here in Pocatello. With the embankment there on the Port Neve side to finish that, it's a tough question, you know? People throwing out the word eminent domain, you know, we still need to listen to those people to finish that. If they don't want it there, there has to be a reason. When the levee was built up with the Army Corps of Engineering, you know, that was there to protect Pocatello from flooding. Well, now the embankment's up higher, they put that Greenway there. They're, you know, they're going to be in someone's backyard, pretty much. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't like that if someone built something above my property line and had to look down at my house. But, you know, I'd like to see it finished. It's one of those assets here in Pocatello that I think would advertise Pocatello to other businesses, larger businesses, to see recreational use in our city, so.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
I think we all would like to have a place to walk in that, but I'm not for taking away the private property rights. I think those people have a very big interest in that, if their rights are being taken away. And I'm not for taking away those rights. I think the people have to be involved as citizens in that, in that. They're the ones that are going to be paying for that. So, I think we need to take their input and what they have to say and their suggestions very strongly.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
I think we have to be much more creative than we've been. For example, if the Green, Greenway's lost a lot of money because things just stalled out. They had a lot of grants that came to them, and plans couldn't be actuated, and so they had to give the grants back. Second thing, I think if the Greenway would have had some grants where they could have actually bought the properties, where there was a question about who controlled access on the levee, they could have easily bought the property, deeded off the levee part of it, and sold the property again and moved on. And I think that's a creative way of doing it. Third thing, I suggested that they look at going down the old Bannick Highway, you know, the one that's up high on the hill. I think you come off Lincoln or Johnson High and go back through there, and make it a one-way street so that one side of it could be the pedestrian and walkers, and the other side could be the vehicles. And then you could come out, ride the golf course, go through city property, get up on the levee, and you wouldn't have any problems. You know, I just think you have to be creative. And some of the obstacles that were perceived to be with the levee really weren't there because when we really got proper understanding of who controlled property, it wasn't the person who was controlling the levee that really owned the property. They assumed they did, but it was a guy on the other side of the river that actually owned that, both sides of the river and both levees. So, it's just being smart and working it through and being creative.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Oh, the Greenway, one thing that doesn't happen with the Greenway is it's not being promoted efficiently enough. Because right now, if we could encourage the citizens to actually use the Greenway and go on the Greenway, they would understand how wonderful Pocatello is. It takes you through some of the best lands and lets you see just the mountains and the forest and everything that's right here in our backyard and how great it is. We need to promote the Greenway even more. I use it personally. And once we encourage the citizens to use it, and they do use it, they will see the importance of the Greenway.
Thank you. Mr. Johnston?
We have an outstanding trail system around Pocatello. 250 trails. And that's a real destination for many people from outside of the area to come to our community, to use those trails. Now, we have about 10 miles of Greenway Trail, as near as I can tell. And each one of those miles has cost us about $100,000 to put together. We need to put another 10 to 12 miles together. And at $100,000 a mile, we need roughly $1.2 million to put that together. That money is not in the city budget. So, I think we need to continue to get the private dollars in there, get this completed, then turn the Greenway over to the Pocatello Parks and Recreation Department to maintain it. If we're going to have a Greenway, there has to be cooperation. I recommend anyone that's interested in the Greenway that they go to the Greenway Project presentation and social at 6:00 PM Wednesday, October 21st, at the Mystique Theater. And you'll learn a little bit more about the Greenway, and you'll decide what you want to do, whether support or reject.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I love the Greenway. We've spent a lot of time on it, riding our bicycles. I'd like to see it keep expanding it. Some of the property, like to protect the property owners, but if some of it could buy back and get rid of part of the ditch and make it, then the other property values are going to go up, and you're going to get more taxes. If you can make it more attractive, then the property values are going to go up, and your tax revenues will go up. And we just got to see if we can work towards that. And I want to definitely go to this Greenway. What is that date again, sir?
It is on the 21st of October.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Lox?
Well, I've been working, I was part of the original Greenway group when we tried to form those things years ago. But things have their lifespan, and sometimes they go corrupt. And the Greenway went there, but they backed out of it. I'm working with them again. But the city took over some of the controversial issues, like people who were stealing land from the city and letting them have it. I've got a whole list of laws that have been broken by the city council for the People's Park area where the Pocatello Creek runs into, into the Port Neve River. I am part of, in fact, the founder of the Lox Beaver Wildlife Refuge. We have the most unique beaver population nursery in North America, as far as I know. We want to work with people, we got people who want to come from other places in the country to study the uniqueness we have here. And on the 24th of October, we have our first annual wildlife survey, going to go on right from the gap to the bottoms. And hopefully, it'll expand and have people involved and learn about. We live with other animals. A Greenway is a river, a repairing environment that things live in. And to have a real relationship, we're not going to be jogging up and down the river. There are things that live there that make it a beautiful place. And preserving that and making it for it is utterly important.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
We have a great Greenway. And it is heavily used. It could be used more, but we don't know how heavily used it is. And so, we've just recently gone into a cooperative agreement to actually have counters placed on the trails so that we can count the number of people that use those trails, so that we can better accurately look at the future on where to put the Greenways, what parts of the Greenway need more attention for maintenance. And so, I think our Greenways are a very important quality of life issue for us. And believe it or not, that is one of the top issues on the checklist for businesses when they come to Pocatello. When they look at relocating here, or someone has accepted a job with ISU, or ON, or whatever, that's one of the issues that they look at, is the quality of life, which includes our Greenway system. And so, it's an important part of who we are and our identity.
Thank you. Ms. Orr?
Sometimes I think our community has illusions of grandeur. Because the problem with a lot of the things that we have in the community is that every time you build something that is tax-supported, it takes that, that land off the tax rolls. And so, one of the reasons our property taxes are so high is because we have so many of these things. And one of the things that, that people have to realize is the difference between what is valuable and what is productive. Greenways are valuable. Police are valuable. Fire departments are valuable. Education is valuable. But they are not productive. They're like supporting a standing army. What we have that's productive are our farmers, our ranchers, our businesses, all of our contractors, all of our developers. Those things are productive. What is productive supports all that's valuable. We have to support what is productive in order to keep these things. I have been encouraging businesses to no longer donate to tax-supported entities for building projects because it's taking the land off of our tax rolls. It's increasing everybody's taxes. We have to stop doing that until our population increases. And that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any additional comments? So, to Mr. Wells? I got a "no" down there. Mr. Wells? Mr. Johnston?
I would be very interested in knowing how many pedestrians and bikers have been injured because we have not had a good Greenway for them to ride on. Because we have so many people who ride along Bannick Highway in fairly dangerous situations. And so, that's something I'm going to try and find out, to see if we really need to work a little bit harder on this.
Thank you. Mr. Lox?
Well, innately, some of them, Jim, are mountain bike riders, and they take a high risk sometimes, riding down those tight trails. But one thing I want to share with you, you know, I want to work with private business here. In fact, we've been pushing, promoting the Pocatello Shoot. I'm a problem solver. So, I came up with a great solution for our trench through town, and that's running races and bike races. It's just a robe with water on it and a minimum flow in the summertime. We have the most unique two-mile track in the country. I mean, other places will have money to build one, but we already have it. And so, we've been trying to work with people to create the Pocatello Shoot.
Ms. Orr? We'll move on then to Ms. Frazier. What is your vision for the growth and expansion of the city, and specifically discuss annexation areas or projected growth areas?
That's a big question. Okay. I actually envision a city, well, we've got a great city, but I think it can be even better, that have the tax system in line, that we're not hurting families on tight budgets with the tax system, but we can pay for all of our needed things, like the, you know, our water and power and all this, that people can actually afford to pay those without going into debt or having to lower something else. I, as far as annexation, I think that's got to be a two-way street, just because we might want to add ex somewhere, like Chubak or whatever. If those people in that city don't want to, you know, there shouldn't be any forcing. I don't think there could be any way. But would just be to cut, to cut the red tape, cut all of the restrictions that are so tight. I mean, we can loosen up some of those and make it streamlined, make it easier for our city to grow.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
Pocatello's a lot like Anchorage, Alaska, because we have boundaries around us. I don't know if you realize it, but Anchorage is real landlocked because of Forest Service lands and ocean and stuff like that. Pocatello has mountains and government lands and separate tribal lands that block us to a degree. And so, one of the big issues before us is how do we build unlimited land and do it wisely? Because what we put down today may be what we have to recycle for use 50 years from now. So, we've got to do it wisely. My vision, I think, has been clear, we, one of the things we said coming into a city with limited resources... with limited resources, if you're going to get annexed into the city, or if you're going to do a special build in the city, you've got to bring water with you. Or you've got to pay an extra fee to bring that water. There's only so much water that we have, and I just think that when we talk about fees and we want everybody to pay extra to go swimming, and we want everybody to go pay extra to do this or that, it just seems, if you're going to use more water, you've got to pay extra to do that too. And that's what the nature of the capacity fees are, is just saying, hey, if we're going to line up behind fees, we've got to line up behind capacity fees, as well as a rec fee, as well as a dog fee, you know, all those type of things that we want to be self-sustaining. We're trying to make our water and our sewage more self-sustaining.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
My vision for Pocatello, one of the terms that's used with Pocatello is "we're the gateway." And that's what it should be. Pocatello should be a destination spot. People should be wanting to come here to visit the West, to see what's going on. We could build up the airport, build up our economy. Once we get our budget in the black and we're no longer trying to play catch-up, then we can envision this and make it possible. We can make Pocatello a destination place. We already have ISU. ISU is a big university, and it's a great place. It provides so many jobs to Pocatello. Pocatello is a destination area. As the city council, we get that budget under control, we can make it that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston.
I think it's really important for everyone to realize that the goal of the city council is to have three months of reserves, and we're very close to having that. There have been people that have criticized us for what we've had to do, but we are working to make sure we are responsible for what we're doing. I think we have an excellent infrastructure for supporting growth. We're going to have to change the idea of what we're doing with our growth. We may have to change the style of what we're doing, smaller lots, as was mentioned. There may be a need for us to do more with upper-story housing in Old Town. I mean, we really have some great resources available. We just have to work a little bit smarter in terms of our planning. But much of our infrastructure is very old, and so we have to be prepared to pay the price of improving our infrastructure so we can support growth. We need good, clean growth, and if we'll work at that, I think it will be in the best interest of all of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
City growth, need better air service, better use of the airport. So drive to Idaho Falls or drive to Saw Lake, I'd like to see us use it more. And we've got a great, you've got a large area out there that could be used for a lot more things. They're starting to look into more and more of that. I think we just need to use the resources we have and expand on those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorax.
A vision, huh? A vision where, yes, we do not sprawl up and down our mountains on all sides, which is public lands. A vision where we have enough water for everyone. A vision where we have cleanup like is going on in Cortalane and Kellogg and all that area, which is pretty similar stuff, uranium materials and heavy metals, same stuff we have. You know, that's a vision of sustainability is what we should look at. Yes, a vision where we attract, we have a product to help people for tourism, for products that are locally designed and created in Pocatello, Idaho, and not necessarily just uranium products or making uranium crystals up on campus or, you know, or bringing more uranium materials to the state. We're just becoming the dumping ground. I mean, Kuwait has an accident, where's the material go? They ship the desert contaminated stuff to Idaho. Yeah, because we have this reputation. We're the Rocky Mountains, just dump here. I didn't come here for that. When I came here, which I've been here a long time often, is my home base. It's a beautiful place. I love being able to walk up and go up the mountains. But I have to be careful where I walk when I'm down in the valley and where the dust kicks up or Chernobyl, Idaho. I have to be careful of those things because the contamination is still there. It did not get cleaned up. My vision is, let's live healthy and a longer life for us and our children and our future generations.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. In my opening statement, I talked about Pocatello being in the top 10% of cities recovering in the United States. It is political season, and in political season, it's really easy to criticize and to look at the negative. And I think we need to just take a step back and look at the good things that have happened in Pocatello over the last while. I sat on the Pocatello Development Authority for 11 years, Bannock Development Corporation for five years, and we accomplished some great things that are paying off now as well. I mean, you look over the years, we've got Allstate, and I know it's a call center, but we've got 600 people out there. They're getting ready to expand again and fill to capacity at 700 people. I was out there yesterday, and one of the employees came up to me and said, "Mr. Brown, I love working here." You have Caterpillar with a huge expansion down by Century. You've got Amy's, of course. You've got Peterson's out at the airport, big expansion at Great Western. You had Atco, which you just read, is expanding some more. There's several more. You look at the expansion, the development of Pocatello Square over the years and how that changed the face of Pocatello. We've got multiple businesses in the coming months that you're going to hear about, their expansion, their growth, that we can't announce yet tonight, but you'll be able to see those in the coming months. We're in a good place, we're doing good things, and we're making good progress.
Thank you, Ms. Orr.
One of the biggest problems that we have here in Pocatello as far as growth is that our four biggest employers are all tax-supported. It's the school district, ISU, the city, and the county. They're all tax-supported. It is really important that we curtail as much of that kind of growth that's taking land off the tax rolls. Because when we get these palaces built for the city, we've got to maintain them. When we have all of these things that are built, we, as taxpayers, have to maintain them. There's no other source for the money to maintain these things, and we have to be realistic about that. If we can keep the expansion down of our tax-supported entities and create more expansion in business to balance it, because we are way out of balance right now. Every cent, retail cent, that is spent in this community is 855 million dollars a year. That includes the 92 million that comes off the freeway for tourism. Our city budget's 110 million and our county budget is more than 50 million. And we also have to support the school district, and we support the state as well. So just kind of think about those things. We need to support our local businesses and help them expand.
Thank you, Mr. Millward.
Yeah, this is some of the hope and dream that Pocatello's actually going through right now with some numbers. I don't know if Jim Johnson likes the numbers or not, but it just shows where Pocatello's coming from. Last year, we were sitting at 26,733 people looking or having a job in Pocatello. Right now, a year later, we're sitting at 29,100. We're above the pre-recession mark. So Pocatello is growing. We have people moving here wanting to look for jobs. That's what we have to give Pocatello. We have to get out, look for those jobs. Like what was presented earlier with Bannock County, or the Bannock County Development Corp. Great opportunity for us to sit down and listen to those people who want to expand their businesses here in Pocatello, to watch the Great Western Malt Plant wanting to expand double their size, to watch ICCU building their facilities all around Pocatello. Those are good-paying jobs here in Pocatello, and we need to stay on track with those to be able to make sure that we are providing and we are protecting those jobs as well. With the developing of different areas, we need to work with our contractors here in Pocatello. I know there was a debate about a year ago with how they were going to run water pipe, if it should go still or should go poly pipe. We need to look at that. We shouldn't just say no. We need to actually research and figure out how we can start buildings homes a little bit cheaper for us to live in.
Great, thank you. Any responses? Ms. Bray?
Okay. I would just say that Atco said they were going to add 75 jobs. They took away 49 earlier this year, so the net gains 26. You know, when you look at facts and figures, I just hope we look at them for what they really are. And when you look at the chart in our tax base, when it's in declining time, it just shows you we're not headed in the right direction. And I think that there are those of us who can be a part of the mix and help us go in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston.
I think it's really important for us to recognize that our income has changed greatly in terms of taxes. For example, franchise fees have gone down. There are fewer people using cable, and we have been, the city receives funds from cable franchise fees. People have more efficient automobiles, the electric cars. We're not getting the same tax dollars in from the gasoline tax. And so fewer resources have caused us to have to spend more tax dollars from other sources.
Any additional comments, Mr. Lorax?
Yeah, I have a big issue about ethics. You only went in graduate school or ISU, ethics. You know, even Amy's has uranium on three sides of their building, and I worry, I'm concerned about the ethics of a city, a government, or anybody who doesn't tell people things. And you don't think they'll be angry? You don't think they will sue? You know, people, this is going to, the reputation of this community is being killed by the community. I came here incognito, working with everybody, to clean it up.
Any additional comments, Mr.?
We have to be careful with government as well. When the companies actually do come in and want to build, we have to make sure they are using our qualified trade workers as well. With the cat, I'm glad to see them expanding, but they are an outside workforce going in and building this facility.
Thank you. This question will go first to Mr. Bray. There are a number of questions on the budget, so I will try to incorporate them here. Would you consider any of the following? Contracting out for services such as street maintenance? Conducting zero-based budgeting? Ensuring that city employees' raises don't exceed the average private sector raises? Or streamlining departments and eliminating any overlap? And I can read those again.
And we're supposed to do this in a minute and a half.
Well, maybe just comment on the budget because you have a lot of concern out here.
Okay. I will tell you that I believe the budget is out of control. I will tell you that when you don't take into account the loss of revenue of 2.4 million and just keep on going, when you don't understand that when you add 13 more employees, it's real hard to give cost of living raises. When you hear your police and your fire union and other employees tell you that their wages have not kept pace and that now in the private sector, they are finding that they are up to 25% behind competitive wages in the private sector. When you start hearing that, then you know that something's broken and it's time to start fixing it. When we lose firemen, when we lose police, we're losing an asset to our city. It's an asset that we have to pay a lot to replace. So I think the first line that we need to have is, when we say we're not hiring, don't hire. My understanding is, there was a new hire just in the last couple days. You know, when we say we're not hiring, don't hire. And 13 people in two years is very significant. When we hired, it was because voters approved six firemen, our ambulance people, and there were some other things, efficiency of scale. It is time to take the budget apart and put it back together in a way that helps us to be financially prudent.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Streamlining, that's a really big thing, is we need to take action. And it's just with the PRT thing that I go back to. In June, when the PRT thing hit its critical climax and the wheelchair routes were cut, I had found out later that the mayor and everybody was aware of the problem 18 months prior to this happening. And what happened there is it was just ignored and left. And if it would have been dealt with 18 months ago, then we wouldn't have had the issue. And that's what I see is going on, is we need to identify the issues with the streamlining of the budget and act on them, and work quickly and fast, as quickly as we can, and be prudent.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston.
Well, there really are two ways to get to the top of an oak tree. You can either climb one limb at a time or sit on the acorn and wait for it to happen. This city is working extremely hard to get things under control, and I can assure you that we will see significant changes in terms of our budget. I think we're going to be able to effectively see some changes in terms of what citizens are paying in terms of taxes, and I'm certainly one who's going to work extremely hard to make sure that happens. The person that we hired this week, someone was scheduled to leave in January, who is very technical and very critical to our cleanup of chemicals from our water. If we didn't have that person out there, we would probably be fined very heavily by federal people. So we had to do that. And so I think be critical if we don't know what we're talking about.
Mr. Carter.
I really haven't studied it that much, but to me, it's, I don't like you do your own at home, you know, you've got it, live within it. It's open there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorax.
I said you'd read it again.
Yes, I will. Thank you. So questions on the budget. Would you consider contracting out services like street maintenance? Would you consider zero-based budgeting? Ensuring that city employees' raises don't exceed private sector raises? Or would you consider streamlining departments, eliminating overlap?
Well, I have to go from the position that I talk to people who are doing things here. Most of the time, they're from somewhere else. And then I say, "What do you know? Did anybody tell you about the uranium?" "No, but they told us about lots of water on it." You know, and that be at FMC, be it street workers in Chubak, and, you know, sometimes Pocatello. Glad Pocatello's doing some certain things about it. But I'm not happy that they got equipment, now grinds up roads, boils off the volatile hydrocarbons, and puts the uranium back and sells it again. I mean, you know, do not tell, has that cycle? I mean, we've got to get a grip on how we spend money, who the companies we're working with, or could people come in and get a handle. Stop the conspiracy, the scandals, selling things under the table. You know, why am I banned? I'm a reporter. That's why I'm banned, because I know too much. I read the budgets. I read the financial things. I can go on and on about par deum issues or one thing after another. Yes, definitely it's cleaning up, Jim. I agree with you. So, you know, hopefully, most of the, well, other people in this committee won't rely on just city council people doing this. Hopefully you get a little bit more involved in what your money goes to, because it's shrinking. It is shrinking. There are people with uranium on their property who don't want it and want their taxes back. There are people with uranium on their property that's unlawful to have it or sell it. So they want to sue. We're going to have problems with them if we don't clean things up.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I am proud of the work that the council has been doing. We have been responsible with this budget. One thing that past councils have not done is put into place a reserve policy. Jim mentioned that a little bit, using our reserves. We had some reserves, we try, we want to try to have at least three months' worth of reserves, and we've got some that are, we have so much money in there, they would last over a year. And so it's important that we have a policy in place, and we're working on that right now, to make sure that we have three-month reserves in all of our funds that are most appropriate. So I'm proud of the work that we're doing. We've been responsible. An example would be in our attorney's office. We had an opening with a retirement, and we restructured that department rather than hiring someone new. I think it'll work out well. We don't have a hiring freeze right now, but we do have a review of every job that opens up.
Thank you, Ms. Orr.
My answer to those four questions would be yes, 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 and yes. I would look at all of those things. I think we need to look at all of those things for the sake of the citizens of this city.
Thank you, Mr. Millward.
Yeah, we need to compare to other cities as well, see what they're doing with each department as well. Roger discussed that there's 13 people employed in the last two. I have the record showing that it's been further than that, four or five years, I believe, is when we started creating more jobs here, and the population hasn't grown. There might be a reason why we brought in more people. But one thing that I live by in my life is a Thomas Jefferson quote. He says, "Shall not take, shall not take from the mouth of labor the bread that it earns." We have not been keeping up with our CPI here in Pocatello, and I see that in the budget every year when you go and look at it. That's a big concern, that we are not paying our employees a fair wage anymore. And then they've had to take on even a more percentage on their health care costs. And so our own employees here in Pocatello are starting to see that hit on their own budgets and their wages. And so we've got to look at that. But we have to look at our budgets and figure out why and where our money is going to and where we can turn.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier.
First off, I don't think I would want to have things contracted out, but if it's at all possible, not contract it out. I think you have to look at what I think you have to look at what job you're having done. I think that looking at the budget like the council's doing now is a great idea. I really like to see that and see where the money is going and who's spending it. But my, the majority of my focus is that person on that fixed budget at home, the one who's paying the bills, the one who is really strapped for money in any one month and goes paycheck to paycheck. I think we need to pay a lot of attention to them also and get their input and others' inputs as far as the budget and other things.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I'll just say this. When we look in a mirror, we usually do it because it's the most objective sense of ourself we can get. The city just concluded its budget process in August and they're already punting by having to have to go back and study again. They're having to take their budget apart and they punt it on workers' compensation and what they're doing in terms of workers' comp and the disparity there. They're punting on the insurance. They told the police and fire department, "We couldn't get it done this year." There are all kinds of things like that and you can't punt it down the road. You need to stop and take a look at it.
Thank you. Mr. Wells? Uh, sorry. Any additional? Mr. Johnston?
Well, in the beginning, we make choices, but in the end, the choices make us. And I am not afraid to make tough choices. And what we're doing right now is making those tough choices. Maybe we should have made them sooner, but we're making them now and I'm proud of the city council for doing that.
Any additional? Mr. Lorax?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind Jim of, you know, not inviting me to the Realtors Association to talk about issues that, you know, he asked me, "Can you just, can we just put that uranium on the side there and just kind of cover it up while we sell the property?" And I said, "Well, who's going to watch it for $10,000 here?"
Any additional comments from others?
Just one. Pocatello has a 17.7% poverty rate, so national average is 7.6. So that is one of the things we really have to be concerned about and we need to make sure that we don't have future growth of government until our businesses and our city grows.
Additional? Then we'll come back to Mr. Wells with what looks to be the last question and I think we'll bring it down to one minute. The question is what specific...
Is there a wrap-up to this, Steve?
For you?
No, I mean for all of us, do we get a second?
Oh, no. Please contain your wrap-up in the response to this question.
One minute.
Wrap it up. So to Mr. Wells, what specific thing could you do to keep the public more informed about the city council and to get the public more involved?
Ah, the biggest thing I can do is I've got a big mouth and I can say it. Because that's one of the things, we really need to speak to the public, open up a line of communication that let them know, come to us and voice their opinions. That's what I've been doing all summer and I have gotten a lot of attention over the PRT route is because I've been so vocal. And that's what we need to do is open that rapport. Citizens can speak to the city, the city can speak to the citizens. Once we open that line of communications, then compromises and we can make things accomplished and do things.
Thank you. Mr. Johnston?
I think I'm doing a very significant thing. I go everywhere I can to meet people and talk with people and I'm getting excellent input. I got a list of things just right here that people have told me over the year. Listen to us, represent us. Citizens are important in Pocatello. Everyone should be respected. The Constitution says that we should be treated equally under the law. You know, these are things that people have said to me this year alone that I wrote down. And so I want to continue working to communicate with this, the citizenry of this community and do the things that they want. We won't always agree, but I will always listen and I will act the way I feel we should based on the input that I get.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I guess be available, listen, open up, educate, be there for the people and try to get them out and get them involved.
Thank you. Mr. Lorax?
Well, I, for impeaching the whole bunch of them, and I bet you know that because the corruption in government and lack of rights, we're becoming a lawless community as long as we keep trying to hide this contamination here. And, you know, I think we should get rid of the mayor system for sure because, you know, meeting behind closed doors all the time. We used to when Donna Bo was, I remember when I first came to this community when she was acting mayor, you know, it was like open court more or less, you know, without a trapdoor, Steve. So, you know, you can't push it to get rid of me.
I've been fighting for that.
Yeah, I know you have. With the kill button that Brian put up, you know, had removed from under the table here. But, you know, basically, open government, you know? We need transparency, not how many people go walking in and out of Brian's office. He's on ban there, so why don't keep track of who goes in and out of his office? So, and otherwise, I meet with all these guys, as many as I can.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I think the public's frustration with government is probably one of the chief reasons that people don't get involved. People don't get engaged. And I think that a lot of that stems from national politics. We are the government that's closest to the people. We make decisions that impact your life on a daily basis, probably more than the federal government does or the state government. And so if there's something that we could do as elected officials to make sure that we maintain the civility in the public discourse, I think that's important. Just because we have opposing opinions doesn't mean the other opinion is evil. And that's kind of where we've come. That's where we're at. And I think it's important to make sure that we understand that good people can disagree and still be good people.
Thank you.
Can I huck it for Miss Orr? I mean, I like that.
Well, that's a lot of it too, because an adversarial attitude of any kind never ever solves the problem. And we're a small town. One of the things that I would do as a councilperson is when we have an issue that we know is going to impact people, let's go talk to the people. If they can't come to us, let us go out to them. Like I said, I've talked to 100 businesses in the last few weeks, 100 business owners. Well, we can do that with issues that we have coming before us and we need to talk to the, we need to talk to the city, to the city employees who are doing the work also, who are actually hands-on. Those are the people that we need to talk to. And the way we can open those lines of communication is for us to do it. And I would do that as a city councilperson.
Thank you. Mr. Millward?
Perception is the first thing we need to start changing. Jim Johnson has done a really great job for me in my position where I sit on the Central Labor Council. I asked him to come and speak at a few of our events and he's been there. If we want people to participate in government, government needs to participate with people. He's kind of shown that off a little bit with me and I thank you again for your help. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing me to come and be a part of this forum. I've been with you guys since I was about 12 years old when you used to hold the central election office there in the hotels and we'd have both lined up with both candidates and I'd go knocking on doors and feeding off of their little treats that they had there and watching the boards, you know, getting all anxious and excited for that. So I thank you. But I think we have a lot of change that we need to make here in Pocatello, but I see a lot of bright days ahead of us as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fraser?
I think besides going out and talking with people, as you can see, I'm a nurse and trained to listen. I think you need to listen to the people and not only listen to them, but respond to them and let them be involved and know that every voice is important, no matter who they are. They should have a right to talk with you and you should be courteous to them and let them say what they need to.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. I think this is an important forum. I think you've heard a great diversity of insight and opinion tonight. I think I bring a lot of diversity to this group. I think that my outlooks from business perspective and from tax perspective is a real important blend to the council. I think I offer the ability to listen. I am a trained listener. I do that in lock. I also do talking, but I'm also an advocate and I think that we've just barely touched on a portion of our community that's not really been advocated very much. We have a lot of people who our taxes and our fees do harm to. They don't just cost them, they do harm to them. And we've got to find a way to find a greater compassion for those people because they're not here, they can't afford to be here, and we have to have a way of listening to them and giving voice to them. I can do that. Please vote for me.
Thank you. Any final remarks? Thank you all. You are a wonderful audience. I appreciate the questions that you have. I'd like to encourage everyone to get out and vote and if you have questions for your candidates, they've invited your conversation, so please get in dialogue with them. Thank you.
Oh, hold on.